Okay, it is Thursday, August eighth. We're in the Greenfield High School Library convening the Greenfield Public School, School Committee Handbook Subcommittee Meeting. It is six ten P M. There's currently no public present to make comment or to additionally record. So let's call the meeting to order at six ten and we will begin our working session with our parliamentary procedure suspended as we have in the past. And pursuant to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, we are making an audio recording of this meeting for the public. In attendance is Elizabeth Daniev, Kate Martini,
Present.
And Stacy Sexton.
Present.
Alright, let's begin. We do not have minutes for this meeting, but we will for our next meeting and it's just finishing them up. And we should maybe look at the calendar as I have learned in the beginning to look at the calendar to see when we are available to have a next meeting. So if we could all whip that out and see. I am fairly free, starting September twenty-third on. If there's any time after that time that works for any of you, I can be very flexible. What do you think Kate?
I will be available in person the most on Monday, Friday and the weekend. Except that Friday, the twenty-seventh, I do have a evening thing.
I hate to do something on Friday night just because that, you know, that cuts into the weekend. The weekend doesn't begin.
Nobody wants to be that Friday.
So what about Monday, the twenty-third?
Works for me.
Okay, so Monday, September twenty-third, we seem to like in-person for this format. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's most productive.
Okay, do you like this time, six o'clock? I can't really do five thirty just because I'm, I'm sometimes off the bus at four forty-five and then I have to go home and do mom stuff and then turn around. I always have to do a turn and burn for six o'clock meetings, so. Six, okay? Okay, I will contact Karen and see where we could meet. Because depending on the custodian schedule, we can meet at the GMS Library or here. Wonderful. So I didn't print out our doc because we all have access to the Google Doc. But we did talk at the last meeting that we were going to have what we have worked on, a rough draft to present next week at the meeting. So I'll be sending it in as materials after I format it. So have, have you guys looked at it recently or?
Not since I worked on my portion.
Okay, so I left the, um, the, we have our chapter and headings, which I think we're gonna have to fill in a little bit more today. Um, and let's see, Kate, you did this great introduction.
Glad you like it.
Did you have a chance to read it yet Stacy? Okay. I, I, I didn't know how to tag this, so I just put like, we completed, check it out. Insert some optimism on this, but this is really lovely. And thank you so much. What a nice introductory letter to new school committee members. I broke it into two. I took the part about, um, the committee organization and I put it lower in the section for that, so I separated them. I don't know if you saw that. Um, so Kate did her part with that. So we now have an introduction. Scrolling through, check all our parts. And Stacy, you said you had a report on statement of inclusion as a foundational document.
Yes, so I have not completed it, but when I had been able to do it, the intro is do a review of our current materials that are whatever's on the website as well as what's in our policy manual related to diversity, equity and/or inclusion. And I was a little disheartened to find that we, if you search inclusion or search equity, nothing pops up on our website. And if you search diversity, it's us honoring some of our graduating seniors for them going off and promoting that in the world. So I was hoping that we might have some materials that I could draw on. That would, so that we could add resonant language and make sure it's like consistent, our messaging across, but since we have no current messaging really, that left me with the wonderful opportunity to go and look at what other school districts have, have done. So I've been doing a review of how other school districts have either written about it or how they've embedded it within their other administrative pages, et cetera, to get a better sense of the kinds of things they talk about, how specific they get to their school and what they do. And all of that good stuff. So I will be working to compile what I like the most from each of those in terms of explicitness. You know, how wide-ranging it touches, not just like, I'm looking for something more than we respect our students' identities. I'm looking for some more actionable language that we might consider bringing into Greenfield Public Schools to really make our commitment one that is, we're doing things. It's not a general sort of statement.
I don't know if you have, you probably don't have time to do this, but if you have a chance, you might wanna read the minutes from the last policy and program subcommittee meeting because we had an issue come up where, um, the public was asking us what our policy was on tribal wear for, um, graduating seniors. And so we had a discussion about that and we were talking about looking at it through the lens of D E I as Glenn had asked us to do all of our work that way. And that led into a, we don't have a foundational
Yes.
statement. And I said, that's interesting because Stacy's working on one for it.
Yes.
And Karen then sent me any language that she could find, so I can forward that to you.
Please.
It's bare bones.
Yes.
Um, but, so Glenn has in his mind that you're literally gonna make a, a whole thing up and he's looking forward to reading it.
Great.
So like the, so I just give you the confidence that the ball is really in your court on this one and I think it's gonna be great. But if you review the minutes, you might glean some info about that feeling. You don't have to listen to the whole thing, but you know that. Okay, and I'm gonna make a note to send with my pen that's not working well at all. I was told these pens are amazing and they're just not amazing. I would love a better pen if anyone can share a pen.
An I voted pen.
Oh, I love that. And it's a, I voted in Greenfield pen.
I also have highlighters and markers in case you want a color code for your notes.
Thank you.
These kinds, this writes in blue. This is one of those nice Jenny.
This is great. I feel, I feel like a proper citizen with the I voted pen. So I'm gonna send that info to you.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you for all of that work.
Yeah, no, it's, it's been really fun actually to go through and see how other districts are approaching their statements. I feel like, you know, you can get a real sense of a school district's commitment to the work by how they talk about it and about whether or not they can point to specific, we'll know we're meeting our goals if kind of language. Which I, which I deeply appreciate.
So next we have the GPS District Mission Statement, which we wrote down to possibly align with the District Mission Statement. Um, I just have the basic language from the website. This is what we have. That's, that's it. So.
I don't think that that entire second paragraph.
That's more like a, what is this place? Because I spent some time
Okay.
poring over the district website. I was actually not able to find the mission statement.
So you don't think this is the mission statement? Cause this is all that I found that looked like a mission statement. It was just like the, you know, the main thing on the main page.
I found a whole document from twenty fifteen, I think that might still be the mission statement, but I don't actually, you know, so I think we have to ask.
So we really need to find out if we have a mission statement.
I'm sure we do.
Where is?
I mean, so in our, in Policy A, there's statements akin to a mission statement. I think we might even call it mission statement, but like from the school committee's perspective. And I don't know if that functions effectively as the same thing.
So we need to have a conversation about this then with Karen and with Glenn about like, one of our goals maybe should be having a functioning mission statement for the district.
And definitely prominently placing it on the district website. Yeah, it should not be hard to find that.
Where is mission statement? So let's ask it, this meeting coming up. That's another piece of debt to.
Okay, that's okay.
That's great. At least we know. Okay, so I'm just going through the list. Um, okay, the member code of conduct, that's the only thing I didn't have time to get into. What I'm, that's a big piece of work. Yeah, but what I'm really gonna do is like take it off of our policy.
Yes.
Cause we have sort of a, we have a policy, um, and I'm gonna in, insert it. This leads me to another question that I have for you all, but maybe that question will come in a little bit. So that's the only part that I didn't have time to get into. And then the public calendar outline.
I have not made any progress on that.
Okay, it's okay.
You have at least a portion of it, right? With the budget related?
Yes.
We may nail down quite a bit of it tonight. And the school committee goals, also something we're gonna try to nail down tonight. I know that we, that we crossed out the academic dashboard, but there, I was speaking to Karen about it and I was saying, you know, it does sound kind of frightening to be like, oh, we need an academic dashboard and oh, what is that? But I was telling her that it could just be a link to like DeBarge's presentation at the PowerPoint where she was showing how we have changed over the years and how, you know, what scores are going up. And how, you know, absenteeism is being dealt with. I said, just like that could be the academic dashboard. So the people can refer to the data, just a way to refer to data that's changing. And she sent the parent update a little bit ago. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read it yet, but at the very bottom of it, she says, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, end of year report. And then links the three-year findings presentation to the school committee. So that is an academic dashboard that we could have in the handbook that's.
It's at least a data presentation and I'm really glad that they went out to the parents and I hope that they.
So I'm wondering if you guys are into not scratching it out and, um, putting maybe the three-year findings in place slash data showing growth in that place?
I think it bears a larger conversation with the whole committee about what types of data members are looking for.
Okay.
And that will be related to one of the questions on the self-evaluation that we are supposed to be discussing in terms of goals later this evening.
Okay. Because as a district, as a committee member, I would find this helpful in a handbook to go and have this data so that when I'm talking to constituents and others, I have data that I can back up what I'm saying with.
And I know what sort of data I'm interested in, but I don't know what everybody else is interested in.
I like having a section that points to it. I don't think that the dashboard should live inside the handbook.
Yeah, there could be a link to it.
Yeah, we have one. This is what it contains and how you might engage with it and make sure you actually find it.
So having it on the website and then having a link to it in the handbook so that we can go back and forth and. Link to it from the website, okay. The, um, list of important personnel. I got most of the way through it because then I ended up talking to Karen who sent me an org chart. So I have an actual, I just was like, please send me like, I need a ladder. I need your ladder, whatever that is for the handbook. And she sent me the org chart and gave me information, contact information for the legal counsel, but she wasn't sure about the compliance officer. That we don't know. So I filled out as much as I could at the time and then I got waylaid, but I have the org chart and I can slot that in. And then Kate did the committee organization. Thank you. All the embedded links to the policy. No, it's so nice.
It's all probably going to get, need to be changed when our policy handbook does get understood by M A S C because so far as I can tell, it is not yet. And I'm not sure how accurate those links are to the policy documents on our own website because as I understand it, what the policy manual that's posted on our own website is not even accurate. So I just did the best that I could with that. And some of our policies are individually linked. Like I'm looking for this policy and it will go there. And then some of them are not, it's just the entire section. So some of those links just take you to section whatever and then you have to go find the policy that you're looking for, which is helpful, but hopefully that will be solved by it being taken up by the M A S C.
Even if we just put link to policy here in parentheses and then fill it in later, it would be fine. And then you did the list of subcommittees and a general description of their function. Did you use the, the sheet that we were given at the last meeting about that to do that?
I did primarily use what was given by the chair for that.
Okay, so you didn't find the re-envisioning?
There was no description for that subcommittee.
Cause its existence is still.
Up in the air.
Well, yes, however, that's one of the pieces of I think essential things that had previously been missing on the committee is having a description of what our subcommittees do. So.
I mean, that should have been there when it was existing.
Should have existed before, whether we were, you know, at this point of discussing what to do with that subcommittee or not. So I couldn't find any description of it anywhere. I went through previous meeting agendas and minutes and things, looking for references to it, like our previous organizational meetings and think, and there was nothing that I could find, so.
Okay.
I might go back to all of the prior re-envisioning, the prior subcommittee meetings themselves.
I went into those, yeah, and I couldn't find a description of this committee.
We also need one for union negotiations.
Yes, so I noted in there and what I sent to you, the things that don't currently have a description.
Okay, and then.
And I didn't write one because I felt like that's not my place to do. I think the chair should do that.
Yeah, I'm going fast because they're all gonna start showing up in fifteen minutes and I'm not gonna let them in. Okay. I did the important links. I did the school partnerships. I filled in the acronyms. Uh, you did the how to be a school committee member. Thank you, lovely, lovely. Gorgeous writing. I love this part about communication. So nice. Okay, and then we hit the end. And this is where I have a question for you guys because if we submit a rough draft to everybody next week, I would love the rough draft to not have any of our text in it. I'd love it to just have the bullet points of what we're gonna fill in. And I'm wondering how you feel about that because I don't want people to get too like stressed about reading it all. I'd much rather have a list of like, these are the points that we've decided we're gonna hit and this is how it's gonna look.
When I hear the words rough draft, I imagine the full text of what I'm going to be seeing.
What do you think Kate?
I think it's probably a good idea to have feedback sooner than later from members. Because I don't know about you, but I don't have scads of spare time to devote to things like this. So, um, if we're gonna need to, if I need to say, go in there and amend this how to be a school committee member section, which I am anticipating having to do because that is a particularly creative section that we just have to make. Um, it's not like it comes off of a template or something. Then I would just like more time to be able to do that.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I hear what you're saying. Like I don't, you know, I do worry a little bit about hearing a ton of nitpicking from other members when we're not really ready.
Yeah, I just, I worry that they're gonna focus on the holes, on what's missing instead of what we've done.
And that, that is possible. That is kind of human nature to do so. And right now as we're drafting, I think it's actually incredibly important to get the what's missing.
Yeah, okay.
So that we can fully flesh that out. I think that we can be very clear in our ask when we, when we say, hey, when you're reviewing this, this, don't just tear it apart. This is literally a first draft, so you don't have to worry about it being perfect, but like what sections should be there that aren't, or if there's anything that you're finding like egregiously unacceptable.
Perfect.
Job here is not to be the New York Times editor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. No, I, I love, I love those words. That's perfect. So then we should write down all of the things that we have left to fill in and make a list because whether we have it filled in or not, or whether we assign bits to each other or not, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to print this all out, format it and print it all out and at least have people, have something for people to look at. So we have the new member materials, which will totally come from the website. The reimbursement section, which will come from the website and our brains, our knowledge of how it goes. There is, but it doesn't have all of the information. Doesn't really like tell you how to do it.
Yeah, I, I think that was one thing I didn't finish a sentence in the how to be a member section. Because our policy doesn't spell out the operational stuff of how it actually works. Like you need to, if you sign up for a conference, you need to send a copy of your badge or your program to the superintendent's assistant.
And your map.
Attend it like, I don't, you know, and if you wanna get reimbursed for something like, this is the procedure that you need to follow. That stuff isn't like necessary.
Your mileage map.
Not how to be reimbursed for things.
Yeah, and that has, seems to like it changed a little bit recently, just in my last experience.
And professional development doesn't all exist in our policy area. It exists in the town charter and the policy and our brains. So I'm just thinking of the places we have to get these things that are not all in one place. Uh, how to contact the superintendent and why?
Can, can I make a suggestion about the PD? Can that just be considered embedded in the how to be a member section? Because that's, I spent a bunch of time spelling out stuff related to PD.
Okay.
So I don't think it needs to be its own.
And how to be a member. Okay, alright, um, okay. What does the school committee do? What is our function scope? I kinda think that you got that in the how to be a member.
The question is about the scope? I think that's in the introduction.
Okay.
Budget policy.
Already in intro, okay. And the administration ladder, who are they, what they do and what are their contract lengths? And the org chart, I got that from Christine. Uh, I mean from Karen. Oh my God. Uh, so sorry to the listeners. Um, how to respond to constituent complaints? Some of that is in our policy.
Yes, and I think that.
And brains.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I can't because I don't have internet, but I will do my best.
Do you want a hot spot?
I think I put language about that in the communications section of how to be a member.
What part the?
How to respond to.
With members of the public.
Yes, yeah, with members of the public. I think it's covered in that.
Okay. Okay, these are just questions I'm asking. Is it in the intro? Communication, Kate covered. Required courses, uh, that should be, should be new member. Okay, and how to be a member. Okay, so really the, the how to be a member, the required courses and the professional development all need to be put in your section.
Yeah, they're in there. They're already in there. So you can just.
Okay. Kate's section, okay. I'm just taking notes. It looks like pure hell here. Okay, so brainstorm with me. What other things do we need to put in here? What other things should we cover? That should be. Yeah, but I'm talking additional. Cause I think part of the report is when we get the rough draft, like look through it and see if there's sections missing. Sections you can think about that come to you, but we should try to have as many as possible. Oh, how to be, I just thought of something for how to be a member. Uh, did you add how to do, like that you have to do a yearly campaign finance forum report?
No.
Okay.
That's important.
Uh, the. Have finance. Report yearly to the clerk. And code, um, code of ethic, um, is it called, what is it called? Conflict of Interest Training.
That, that's also all that you have materials.
Just making sure. I don't want to, to jog my mind and then go looking and then it not be there because a lot of things have holes. I'm just trying to like plug holes at this point. What do you think?
I would be okay with moving that piece about the conflict of interest training into the how to be a member required training.
Okay.
Might as well.
Yeah, okay.
I might even.
It is. No, I think that one's every three years. So I decided to do mine. I decided to redo mine and I was like, it's been a long hour anyway.
Uh, maybe I just feel like it's every year, whenever I receive that.
It is such a long, exciting training.
So I know that we have in our policy manual things around like interactions with school staff, interactions with students and what to do when people come to us and want to refer them in a longer condition.
In the communication section in how to be a member.
Double high five for you.
Saying that section does not need to be improved, but.
Can you tell that I, that I only speed read it?
Under communication, you'll see there's communication with students, with staff, with members of the public, with the superintendent, with each other. So it's all, should be all covered in there. And I tried to link policies where they're relevant into that. Because I hate the policy manual that much. It's just too uncoordinated. I always wanted a thing in my hand that I could just be like, oh, that policy.
Yeah, I see. With the superintendent, with staff. It's beautiful.
Like if students have that student handbook, we should have that one.
Totally. Yeah, we should sign this.
In the, um, member code of conduct session, section, sorry.
That's, that's my section. Let me, let me go to it.
We have our policy that's related to it. And also, um, I was just thinking, the committee does officially use, um, Robert's Rules of Order and there is a section in it on decorum. So that could just be in there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so this is, this is where we put Robert's Rules. Yeah, decorum. Articulated consequences is a phrase that I have written down. Or how to make a complaint. All of that stuff is in, see, they're all here early. All of that. All of that stuff is in the policy manual. So I, I asked Glenn so many times, like, well, I'm just gonna cut, copy, paste the policy manual. And he's like, yeah, but fill in the holes.
Fill in the holes and also it's too long. You have to like boil down the policy into a sentence, you know, and when people want more detail, go, here's the link, go look at the policy.
We're still in our meeting, Susan, but it's nice to see you. Okay, don't let anybody else in.
Oh.
Cause we're still, no, we're just still in a meeting and I don't want them all coming in and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Aren't there rules about how many school committee members can attend each other's?
Hi, we're still in a meeting though.
Can I just sit in the air?
No. Sure, yeah, over there. We're still, we have, we have fifteen precious minutes.
Yeah, you can be members of the public, but.
Right, because we had that happen one time where one came to a meeting and wanted to like all of a sudden be part of the subcommittee. And it's like, no, if you come, you have to be a member of the public. So that's something we have to put down. Okay.
It's in policy.
Attending other people's.
I could add that to the meetings section of the how to be a member.
Well, it's also fits in code of conduct, attending other people's subcommittee meetings. Don't you think?
I'd like to keep code of conduct less about like procedures, operations and more about like norms of behavior.
Okay, so I'm gonna put it down in the bottom.
Makes sense to go in meetings.
In the bottom list. I'll put it on the bottom list. I'm I'll clean this up later and you guys can all look at it and like, please get in there and mess around with it, fill in your stuff or whatever, or change things.
But can you just put my name on that one?
Okay.
Because.
Kate will do.
I need to be reminded which ones I am adding to my.
So what am I putting your name on?
The part about how you can attend other subcommittee meetings and.
Okay.
There was another one or two things that we already said and I'm already not remembering which ones were relevant to me.
Oh, quorum stuff?
Uh, oh, I was gonna add the use of which parliamentary rules we have adopted. Just as a little sentence in the meetings section. So you just put that down, put my name next to it.
Okay, um, alright, so we have like a whole list, so let's just assign. Let's just make sure that we have assignments. Reimbursement, I, I'll do. Professional development, you're putting it in your section.
Yes, but put reimburse, whatever you do about reimbursement, I think it makes sense to go into the how to be a member section under professional development. Which is, I think it's the second subsection. So there's already a piece in there about reimbursement. I just didn't finish that sentence. So if you wanted that bit, that's where it is.
And then you're doing the professional development part.
Yeah, it's already, it's already in there. There just needs to be a sentence added, I think, about the conflict of interest training.
Okay, add.
Oh, and the campaign finance.
And the campaign finance, where should that go?
Training and in that section.
Should it?
Yeah. Reporting.
I mean, that's kind of like assuming you created a political entity though. Not everyone does, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I sort of feel like campaign finance is a miscellaneous thing that's not really related to how to be a member.
It is though, because you have to do it at the end of the year and people, and if people don't do it.
If you, if you never spun up a political entity to help campaign or buy your stuff, if you just all paid for it out of pocket, then you wouldn't necessarily need to.
Actually.
No, you have to if you open an account.
Right, but if you never open an account.
Or if you closed it. Maybe it should actually just be a sentence in there about, you know, members, if you have a campaign entity, please be mindful of campaign finance rules, which you can find answers to frequently asked questions and support about from what's the acronym?
There's.
OCPF.
OCPF. Alright, so put your name on that. You already did how to contact the superintendent, so I'm taking that off the list because you already did it. How do I request an item on the agenda? Did you already do that? It's already in there. Sorry, my phone is making noise. When can I expect agenda and materials to be available before meetings? Did you already cover that?
I did cover that, but only insofar as it involves posting and I think it bears further question for the chair about whether you tend to do that differently in practice.
Okay, so I put your name on, check this out.
Yep.
For that, okay. We already did, what does the school committee do? What is our function and scope? It's already in my intro. Okay, so the administration ladder, I'll finish that. Cause I got that org chart and everything and it kinda goes along with the other thing that I was working on. Do you, do you, um, Stacy, do you wanna do, um, how to respond to constituent complaints?
I don't think that's necessary because it's already in the how to be a member communication.
And the communication?
Unless you want to unchange it, which is fine, but it's already.
I will read through it and see if I've got any additions.
Okay. You, you know what? I'm just gonna put your name as Stacy will check.
I will read all the things.
Okay.
And I do think that particular question probably deserves some broader committee discussion because people have had different opinions about how to respond to constituents in the past. We do have a related policy, but it's still very open to interpretation and there's not really an established practice on. For example, I have established office hours and phone number that people can make an appointment with me, but other people don't necessarily do the same thing, so. That's something that maybe when we discuss it at our this update at next week's school committee meeting that we should ask for discussion about.
Point of information, when, when do our materials need to make it to them to be included for next week's materials?
Like tomorrow? Like we, like, like definitely get it to me by like Saturday and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be furiously formatting this document. And so everyone concurrently format with me. I'm just gonna be moving sections and making it look nice. And as, as you're in there, do same. If you see something, a great chance or whatever, and we'll get a somewhat palatable rough draft and then we'll send it, I'll send it to them over the weekend and then I'll get in the thing. Does that sound doable for everyone?
I think for the rough draft, I'm less worried about how it's formatted and more just the language.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just so that it makes sense, so that it's all the same font would be great and like the same size. And you know what I mean? Without weird brain scratches.
Control A is my friend.
You can go through there and.
So I don't have weird questions like get org chart.
Make up my mind for me on whether or not to capitalize committee. You will see that I was up to minds about that in there. Stuff like that.
There's a lot of things that are like highlighted and bolded and stuff that shouldn't be because I was just going fast. So that's what I mean by format it, but we can decide how we want it all to look in the end. This will just be the beginning.
Are we getting the sections? Is this good now?
Let's look at the sections.
Because I do have like an unrelated question.
Let's look at it. So this, uh, so we have the introduction, the statement of inclusion, the mission statement, the school committee member of conduct, public calendar outline, school committee goals, academic dashboard, list of important personnel. The list of important personnel, parents and community has to come out because that's a future product for more things. List of subcommittees and general description of the function, important links, school partnerships, acronyms, how do I FAQ? MASC new member materials. And then the how do I FAQ for parents and community members also has to come out for a future product.
Okay, um, so I have an unrelated question, um, which has to do with my the disjunct between my ability to write things for this and my ability to design things on the computer for this. Because I do have ideas in terms of the graphic design of the handbook that I just do not have the technical skills to materialize. And I wanted to know, do either of you have skills in this area? If not, do we have the ability to actually like call upon perhaps our students to assist with the design of this thing or something?
I know, we need some political interns.
It depends on how extensive the types of graphic design work you're looking for. I can do most basic things in Word and make it look okay. But if you're like I can, I could even, if we really, if you really wanted to get fancy, like we could turn this into a Canva product, which I can do.
That's true. I can, I can work in Canva too with you. But let's ask Karen if they're, because they have just launched. Yeah.
It'd be so good. I would love to work with a student on the design of the handbook, yeah.
Yeah, let's ask about students and also they have this new, um, social media that they're doing and the graphics are sort of all the same. So then maybe they wanna use similar graphics. Which we could do. And it's, yeah, consistent branding, like with the parent updated. It looks slick, so maybe ours can have that same look with whomever's doing it. But I love the idea of student. I mean, like the yearbook group or whoever like does that sort of thing.
Don't they have like a media?
Media students? Make this.
They must teach graphic design.
Handbook slick. Okay, alright, so.
Yeah, this is not ideal.
No, I told, I knew it. I knew it, I knew it. So, okay. Well.
That's it, I think.
We charged through it really fast, but I think we got enough to get us to where we need to go.
I'm proud of the Margos we've made.
Yeah.
Took a thing that didn't previously exist and now parts of it exist. How cool is that?
And I'm also surprised that how hard this is. I, I will take budget and finance or any other subcommittee any day. This is the worst. That's so hard.
Feeling is not mutual over here.
Really? I just find it so hard to create nothing, create something from nothing.
Now is not the time to be saying such a thing to me in the midst of making this budget calendar.
I know, you're doing so well. I think I'm just, this is difficult for me, like this part, like you were saying with the like writing is easier for you than art. Well, this, for me, it's the opposite. So I am maybe struggling. But I'm so thankful that you both have done such work and I think it's cool that we're gonna have something finally.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's materializing. Thank you very much.
So let us adjourn now at six fifty-three.
We adjourned.
We are now adjourned, adjirmed. We are now adjourned at six fifty-three PM to re-adjourn on September twenty-third at six PM.
Reconvene, not re-adjourn.
Reconvene, re-adjourn.
Reconvene and then re-adjourn.
That's right. Alright, thank you.